Good evening, everyone. We're happy to have all of you in. Mr. Taylor, would you somebody close that door? Thank you, thank you very much. Before we begin, let us bow our head in a word of prayer. Eternally God our Father, we thank you for these many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for your protection over the entire county of Orangeburg during the storm. We ask you to continue to protect us and keep us. Bless our city council in Jesus' name. Amen. We're happy to see all of you here as always. Tonight and those of you that are here and that's listen to us virtually, we're also happy to have you also. Our first item on business is consideration of September the 17th, 2024 city council minutes. It's been properly moved by Councilman Strowman.
I think it said Ms. Linda McDaniels. Was she here last, was she here that week?
No, but someone was taking the notes.
Right, well. Posted by them, I mean. It'd make it look like she did the notes.
No, no, it doesn't matter who did the notes, as long as we got them.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody did the notes. So it doesn't matter who did them.
Okay.
Okay, motion is mostly made by Councilman Strowman.
Second motion.
Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, have the motion is carried. All right, recognition of September community of character traits. Consideration, consideration showing concerns for the rights and feelings of others. And we're gonna ask everyone if you would practice and demonstrate the character for this month, which is consideration. Thank you so much. We have an appearance by Mr. and Mrs. Monte Barrett, House of Champions. And we want you all to come to the podium, state your name and your address, please. He glad to have you all tonight.
Thank you for having us. Dr. Tracy Jones Barrett.
How you doing, Monte Barrett?
Yeah, thank you.
We have notes so that we make sure we stay on time.
Oh, okay.
Hello.
Good evening, council members. And I wrote this myself. As a retired world-class heavyweight boxing champion, proud member of the Boxing Hall of Fame, I am joined by my wife, Dr. Tracy Jones Barrett, a higher education professor and administrator. We are here tonight with a vision for Orangeburg, a vision that centers on helping the youth of this city and providing them with tools for success, both in and out of the ring. And that's the House of Champions. We are requesting your support in granting us the use of the old city gym for the House of Champions after-school boxing programs. This program is about far more than boxing. It's a structure after-school and summer programs and additional amateur boxing activities. More importantly, we will partner up with the Orangeburg County Historical Society on community and culture education and offer after-school and summer school programming, educational enrichment, and pathways to success for the youth in the greater Orangeburg area. Our program teaches discipline, focus, and resilience, and most importantly, it builds confidence. The program provides academic support and mentorship, creating a space where young people will not only strengthen their bodies as well as their minds, but also have the discipline and confidence to walk away from confrontation. We want to give these kids something positive to be a part of, to channel their energy, and see tangible pathways to their future success, whether it's athletics, education, or life. To start dreaming again about the possibilities of life and not to reach limits, but to reach highs. I know firsthand the power of community support and mentorship. Programs such as this offer me a great benefit in my life, forcing a sense of belonging and purpose for young people who may be searching for direction. Without support, we can turn this old city gym into a hub of opportunity and excellence, giving back to the community and a profound way building a house full of champions. Thanks for considering this request. Together, we can make a lasting impact for the youth of Orangeburg, guide them towards better days. And I want to just go to Ecclesiastes 4:12. It's one of my greatest verses. Though one may be overpowered, two can defend themselves. A quarter-three strands is not quickly broken. So I understand the power of unity and coming together as a community. And we wanna, we wanna come in this community and help and be, and bring out champions. So I just wanted to say, we're also in conversation with Sean Taylor from the Parks Department about an after-school boxing program for our youth on Tuesdays and Thursdays afternoon, so that we may start our work in Orangeburg. And obviously, this might inquire a vote from the council, you know, for the use of the community center. Or Sean, I don't know, you know, I'm new to the area. I don't know how it goes, but I'm pretty sure, you know, that I'll follow you guys' lead. And if you guys have any questions, I'm open for questions.
Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Barrett? Is there any his request?
Are you speaking for the Historical Society?
Yes, yes, they were here. Yeah, this is.
Ms. Laura Hatt. There's Councilman.
I already gave my vote, so I don't know.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. We support the House of Champions. They wanna honor the history of that section of land from the time Orangeburg was settled to when it was used as a cemetery. They want to not only remember the past, they wanna look towards the future. They know that our children are our future. They know that our children are the ones who are going to be taking care of these places when we're gone. And they wanna build our children up. And that, to me, right there, that's that and not forgetting about where we come from and how we got here. That's gold to me. So we support them. And my president from the society is also here.
Okay, thank you. Jean, you want to say something? So y'all gonna join together and you'll be teaching them how to be champions? And you'll be commemorating the history of Orangeburg?
May I add that in terms of partnering with the Orangeburg County Historical Society, we'll be working with the Museum Studies Program at Harvard to actually develop curriculum. So the children will be learning about that history, but also learning about it in a way that is in alignment with the Common Core curriculum.
Okay. Well, what we, I think what we're gonna need is we need something, some writing, you know, so we can get a clear, you know, put something in writing, so we can get a clear understanding. And then, Counsel, we can read and study it, so that when we come back to you, we can, we can vote on it.
Okay, and I want to, I want to share. Some of my.
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So, and you know, I want to say, and we are, we are open to, you know, if there's any other community centers or anything in Orangeburg. We, I'd rather us work together as a team to help out with the kids, because what we're doing, we're looking at, like myself, we're in a space where we're gonna deal with kids. Some kids that, some people don't wanna deal with even their parents, but at the end of the day, you know what I'm saying, I feel like they're a champion, everybody has a story within themselves. And I'm here to help them be the best version of themselves. You know, and I wanna, I wanna come together with other people who have other school programs or any type of work with education, and we come together as a group and work collectively together. You know, I'm here to work as a team. It's no big odds and little u's where I come from.
Well, we thank you, we thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And we hope that we can get the program off the ground.
Yes.
And move in the hip of our citizens. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Just for your information, Councilwoman Kit did say that she's on the way. Gives her apologies. Item number two for your consideration is a resolution directing the city administrator to develop an annual budget grant application form, adopting the substantially final form of a grant agreement, authorizing the city administrator to finalize, execute, and deliver the grant program agreement related to each budget appropriation guarantee, authorizing the city administrator to administer and oversee the budget appropriation grant program. If you all recall, last year, this time, we asked you, and you passed the same resolution. This resolution is in regards to some of our nonprofits who ask for funding for this, from the city. It formalizes the process through a grant. And if the city has funds, the nonprofit can then apply for a grant. And this will allow you all to, to make sure that the nonprofit is indeed a nonprofit, that they are financially stable and that they're doing what they said they're gonna do with the funds. So this is, ties into this up, well, the current, the new fiscal year, and will allow you all to do the same thing this year, to create the grant, the grant program. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
And this money will be moneyed from the accommodation tax?
No, this is, this is actual, you know, city funds, if available. I wanna stress that, if we have adequate city funds available and want to grant those funds in the form of a grant, then this will allow it to be done. It used to be more of a kind of hodgepodge situation where, you know, nonprofit would have, would ask for money, but this is kind of formalizes the process.
And so it's more accountability.
Yes, yes, sir.
Is this a rolling deadline, so they can apply at any point in time for these funds? Or does it have to be, or is there a deadline for them to?
It's rolling. And again, it depends on availability of funds.
Is there a certain amount that you ask for, or something of that nature?
It all depends on availability. All depends on availability.
Okay. And it sets a uniform to it, you know, because they used to just come to us and ask.
Yeah.
Uh-huh, so now they can apply, and then we can, you know, whoever's gonna vet them can vet them.
Right.
And then, I like that. Any more questions to Mr. Evering concerning this? Okay, we wanna read the, directing the city administrator to develop an annual budget grant application form, adopting the substantially final form of a grant program agreement, authorizing the city administrator to finalize and execute and deliver the grant program agreement related to each budget appropriation guaranteed, authorizing the city administrator to administer and oversee the budget appropriation grant program and provide for related matters. And we need a motion. I move to authorize the city manager to engage in the grant program agreement. Motion's been made, Dr. Kalu.
Second.
Second by Ms. Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have the motion is carried. Okay. Item number three.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number three for your consideration is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city council to execute a community development block grant mitigation stormwater infrastructure program agreement between the City of Orangeburg and the South Carolina Office of Resilience to fund a stormwater infrastructure improvement project that will mitigate the impact of future disasters. This is, if you recall, a few months ago, the city was awarded a one, almost $1.7 million grant for purposes of addressing the stormwater drainage issues on Adden Street. And so this resolution is required to be passed as a part of the receipt of those funds. The funds, again, are coming from the South Carolina Office of Resilience. So we were required to execute the receipt of an award letter, and this resolution has to be passed. Once this resolution is passed, then SCORE, the South Carolina Office of Resilience, will put out a RFQ for engineering firm, and they will select the firm and will begin the process of addressing the stormwater drainage issues in the Adden Street area.
Well, God knows they need it. Lord knows they need it, it's been flowing down for long, I'm so happy to hear this. Anybody want to say something on that? If not, I'm gonna read the resolution. A resolution authorized the mayor and city council to execute an community development block grant mitigation, CDBG MIT stormwater infrastructure program agreement between the City of Orangeburg and the South Carolina Office of Reliance to fund a stormwater infrastructure improvement project that will mitigate, mitigate the impact of future disasters. Need a motion.
Mayor and Council, I move for the adoption of the community development block grant.
Motion been made by Councilman Kit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knotts, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it, the motion is carried. Item number four.
Chief Austin will come forward to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Evering, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Okay.
The agreements that we seek approval on, multi-agency agreements with area law enforcement agencies. Basically, these agreements formalize the relationships that we have with South Carolina State University, the Orangeburg County Sheriff's Department, Claflin University, and the Aiken County Sheriff's Department. Over the long term, we hope to engage other agreements to include agencies in Vanburg County, Bonwell County, Calhoun County, and Dorchester County.
Okay. Are there any questions to Chief Austin concerning this agreement with the various county of law enforcement?
Chief Austin, thanks for your presentation, but let me just ask a question. Is this in addition to the, I think you all call it a mountie, something or whatever, when you have certain activities and things going on, is this in addition to this?
Actually, this is a renewal for that. Generally, they are done on an annual basis.
And y'all have been working together, yeah?
We have been, we have been, and I've actually greatly appreciated it. And I think when we have incidents like this past week, it highlights how much this really means to us in terms of the resources, limited resources that all of us are working with. But when we're able to act on these MOAs, it becomes a force multiplier.
Okay. Any questions? We like to entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept this recommendation.
Motion been made by Councilman Strowman, second today. Second by Councilman Kalu, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I stand before you this evening to present item number five, which is a resolution to update the employee handbook. Cheryl Lynch, who's the DPU HR supervisor, and myself are recommending two small, but we think very important changes to the employee handbook. The first change is found on page 12 of the handbook, and it's under responsibilities to your employer. A section of that, that passage reads, being respectful to the public and your fellow employees. We'd like to change that to being respectful and civil to the public and your fellow employees. Adding the word "civil" to this section emphasizes the level of consideration that's expected from all employees, whether we're dealing with the public or dealing with each other. And it correlates to the Municipal Association Civility Pledge that council adopted back in February of this year. The second change is found on page 43 of the handbook, and it's under the bereavement policy, leave with pay. Currently, it reads that leave may be granted up to three days, and three days is defined as 24 hours. That can be granted in leave for immediate family members, and immediate family members is defined in the handbook. But we are recommending removing 24 hours, and that is because we have employees, both on the city side as well as with DPU, that work 12-hour shifts. So we'd like to change that to say that leave may be granted up to three days, and the three days is equal to the assigned shift hours with pay. We're asking for these changes to be effective today, which is 10-1 going forward and the beginning of our fiscal year. Those are our recommendations.
All right. We heard the report from our HR, our assistant city administrator. Are there any questions or comments?
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
The three days will be exclusive of their PTOs. You will not tap into their PTO, right?
No, no, this is, this is the days that they have been granted, that they can use up to three days for the immediate family members, so that's outside of anything else.
Just a clarification on the resolution. Are we adopting an employee handbook or just the update to the employee handbook?
Just the update, yeah. That's right.
Yes, that's, yes.
Okay. All right. No more questions, I'm gonna read this resolution. A resolution adopting, what's in the question? A resolution adopting an employee handbook for the City of Orangeburg, South Carolina.
I make a motion to approve the update of the employee handbook.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kalu, second by, second by Councilman Kit, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, have it, motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. I think we're gonna have Mr. Cozlar to give us the, he's gonna talk to us about item number six. The Saint Matthew's, I think the Saint Matthew's wrote, but we wanna give our attention to the attorney.
Mayor, members of council, first of all, thank you for allowing me to appear by video. I will probably cut my video off, because I'm actually in an office that does not have an internet connection, so I'm using my mobile telephone this evening.
Okay.
For most, most of you may know that the Greenville area and other parts of the upstate were hit very hard by Helene, so we are still suffering through some, some personal and professional issues with technology and otherwise. So to keep the feed, I'm gonna cut the, the video. So this matter was before council in November of last year. The minutes from that meeting reflect that the item apparently came up for discussion, and at least from the minutes, it appears that it was immediately tabled by a vote of six to one. The, obviously, the matter has been placed back on the agenda, as is fairly typical through the normal agenda process, which is the city administrator's ability to place those items on the agenda. The question was raised as to whether this matter would need to go back through the planning commission process first. There are a couple of areas, both within Roberts Rules of Order and also within the city code, that appear to address this issue. The first one within Roberts Rules of Order deals with what a motion to table is and what it does. As I've indicated before, I think in front of council, a motion to table, rather than a motion to postpone, is a motion that is used to effectively suspend whatever is being considered by the body at that moment. And it is laid on the table, is the appropriate phraseology. And if the matter is not removed from the table at either the same meeting or at the next regular meeting, and that changes depending on the nature of the body, but for city council, it's at the current meeting when the matter is being considered or at the next regular meeting, then, under Roberts Rules, the question that was tabled is considered to be dead or to have died. There is some additional language within the city code dealing with zoning changes that discusses matters not having been acted on by city council, being deemed denied. That does not appear to be applicable here, because the matter was acted on. That is, a motion was made with respect to the matter, and it was on the agenda. So I don't believe that it was deemed denied under 24-12.7, I believe it is. However, the question comes up as to whether, under .8 of the same set of sections under zoning, that the matter would be considered by council as a reconsideration of something that had been previously considered, or if because the matter was simply tabled and no substantive consideration was given to the rezoning request, whether it could be brought back to council without having to go to the planning commission. I am not aware of any precedent within the city for an interpretation of that section. And so I think it would be a matter for council to decide whether something that was not substantively acted on as a rezoning request is considered a current request, and it is on the agenda tonight, in that posture, or if this would be considered a reconsideration of a prior request, in which case it would be required to wait a full year, and it would be required to go back through the planning commission process. And so unfortunately, I'm not sure I have an answer for council, but I think it's a matter for council to consider which posture council believes the city code considers this item. One potential option would be, or council simply to refer this back to the planning commission and have it go through the planning commission process, which presumably means that it would be a year regardless, since we're, I think the matter was tabled November 21st of 2023. And so within the next two months, it would be a full year anyway. And so that may be an appropriate way for council to deal with this and sort of leave open the question of whether a matter that is tabled in a zoning, in a rezoning request is considered a reconsideration or a new consideration of the same matter.
I wanna ask something. Can you hear me, Michael?
Yes, I can.
If, how, we, how, how can we get it back on the table for, I mean, for a reconsideration?
Well, so, the, the, the original presentation of a first reading of this ordinance in November of last year was tabled and was not removed from the table within the timeframe that Roberts considers appropriate for a body like the city council. So that initial consideration of a first reading no longer exists. The matter has been placed back on the agenda as a new question in a Roberts Rule posture. But that does not answer the question under the city code as to whether a tabling of the first reading is considered a substantive action that would then require a year's wait, or? or if because no substantive action was taken with respect to first reading, that is, there was no motion with respect to a first reading, it was simply tabled and never brought back up. And so that leaves the open question as to whether that is considered some substantive act with respect to the ordinance, to the rezoning, or if it is not a substantive action, I think that determines whether this needs to wait a year and go back through Planning Commission, or if it can simply move forward in its current posture as a first reading of an ordinance that's already gone through the Planning Commission.
So, okay, so in, in two months, which is November?
Correct. At the end of November, I believe, again, it was November 21st.
So it would, it would be, it would be a year in, at the end of November?
That is correct.
And then we would have to put it, put it on the table, or they, they waited their period? I wanna make sure I'm understanding it.
At that point, there would, there really is no discussion about the tabling anymore. I mean, that period has long since run. And so the only question is, could council take action now, or would council simply say, this needs to go back to the Planning Commission and go through the Planning Commission process, beginning with presumably the December Planning Commission meeting, which would be a year after the original, the original consideration by council in November of last year.
Okay. I wanna make sure we can take action now.
Yeah, that's, we need to.
What's his name?
What?
Mr. Cozalek?
Yes.
Can the council take action tonight in going through, you know, this reading of the ordinance? Can we do that? Because I think the, the word that I'm hearing there is, is the tabling and postponement. But we use the word tabling, which then councils, they're there because it should have been brought in the next session, or at the end of the, when we tabled it, it should have been brought back at the end of it. But since we did not do that, we should have brought it back in the next session, right?
Correct, but thi- this is one of those situations where the city code and Roberts Rules don't necessarily mesh without some rough edges. Under Roberts, that question that was tabled died when it was not brought back.
Okay.
But I do not believe under the city code, that fully answers the question as to whether this has to wait a year, or council can simply bring it back now as it sits on the agenda as a new question. And I think that determination turns on whether council views under the city code a tabling that is not revived within the appropriate period as a substantive act with respect to the ordinance, or if that is not a substantive act. If it's a substantive act, then it's effectively as if it were denied, if you will, and then it would require the year waiting period or a finding by the Planning Commission that there are some substantive differences. If it's not a substantive act, then I think the city code would permit this to simply be on the agenda and for council to take action as if it were a first reading.
And that's what I'm trying to assume, that we have the authority based on the city code to reactivate this ordinance tonight, which would not be incongruent with what the Roberts Rule of law. So we have the authority based on the city code to make it active tonight to take, you know, make a decision tonight.
I, I believe that the council has the ability to do that.
Okay. So what is, what is, what is, what is the wording?
It, it simply can, if council wants to move forward, it's simply consideration of a first reading of the ordinance, and so it would be just like any other matter that council is taking up this evening.
Okay, so I just need to read this and then we need to see how many people are gonna vote for it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
An ordinance to approve a change to the zoning district map from O1OI, Office Institution to Residential District, to be one general business district for their properties located at 1090 St. Matthews Road, 1080 St. Matthews Road, and 1070 St. Matthews Road, also known as tax map number 0173-0505-001 dot zero zero, 0173-0505-015-000, and 0173-0505-016-000, and provide for related matters. We need a mo, we need to have a motion.
Okay, I'm, Mayor and Council, I'm moved to, to adopt the ordinance to approve a change to the Don District map.
Second to that.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit and motion has been seconded by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Aye, any, any opposed? How many opposed?
No.
It's three opposed and it's four.
Could I have a question?
Ayes, you, you voted, Mr. Greaves?
Mm-hmm.
Ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you. All right. Matters pertaining to Department of Public Utilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council.
Good evening.
You have in your packet item number seven, a resolution recognizing October 7th through, the week of October 7th through the 11th as Customer Service Week. I, I do wanna say this is on the heels of Hurricane Helene, and so we did not plan this to time with that, but it is ironic that it is such close proximity to the storm. Our customer service team, our linemen, our office staff, all performed extremely well during this recent event. On Friday, we lost essentially half of our system, was in the dark, and by Friday, Saturday morning, we had ninety percent, ninety-eight percent of those people back on by Saturday morning. It's a testament to their dedication, those, those linemen, staff who took the calls, dispatched resources to make repairs. All of those people deserve a, a, a big hand of applause for all they did.
Yeah.
And then I, I do wanna take this as a note, because I know council has wrestled with this for the last five years, it is also a testament to your willingness to reinvest in the system.
Yes.
If we had not done that, this could have been really worse. We can't spend enough money to never go out, to never be impacted, but there's a level of reinvestment that did play a part in that, and so we hope that we are able to continue to, to make those reinvestments. So on, all that's being said, at the end of the day, we wanna continue to celebrate our people, our community, and, and the ones we put on the front lines to do this customer service. We, on next week, we will also like to invite council to our, our customer service lunch. That's gonna be on Friday, October 11th at noon, so you guys are invited. We want to serve our, our, our council as well as our staff lunch to show our appreciation for all the hard work they have done throughout the year. And we do this annually as we celebrate Customer Service Week. And the resolution just puts a...
Okay, we're gonna adopt it. I think Ms. Kit wanna say something after we adopt this.
Okay, yes.
One, we do give you an applause and we thank, thank you and your staff down there. Y'all are wonderful. We got the hats off to you. We got nothing but raving reviews from you all, so we thank you. All right, let's draw attention to this resolution, please. Recognizing October 7th through 11th, 2024 as Customer Service Week. We, we need to adopt this resolution, please.
Make a motion, we adopt it.
Motion made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. The motion is carried. I think Councilman Kit wanted to say something.
To Mr. Harley and all the DPU's, City of Orangeburg, the Administrator, let me just publicly thank you all for all that you've done with the storm being here. There are people in Estill, South Carolina, Columbia, Charleston, will not get light and what have you until next week. Here we are in Orangeburg, and we ought to praise the Lord and praise you all for doing what you did, because it was a great service to our constituents.
Yes.
I know the constituents are pleased with the way it really went out, so we're, we're just thankful to all that you've done.
Thank you. And I do wanna say thank you to Sidney and his staff, Chief Austin. We coordinated doing this storm as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Harley, you used the term reinvesting, and I remember some years ago, I spoke to you and asked you, do you need all those, all that equipment and vehicle? I said, man, you just, you said yes. But then we can only improve this town, this community, if we give you the tools that you asked for. You are the engineer orchestrator, you are the CEO, you are the builder of what we ask. Now, we could deny you, but when you come to us with a plan, and in that plan, you need forks and spoons, and we only give you a fork. We have to realize in order for DPU to function as they function, because it's high tech now, that we need to give you the tools you need. We need to give others the tools they need, but this is your day now. We need to give you, we, we can't pull back and give you a piece of tool and come back and patch it up. You're not in a patch up organization. When those lights go off, not only lights, but when everything goes to light, gas, everything, we want you to be equipped with all that you need in order to win that game. And we have to do a better job of giving you what you requested.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to say anything to Mr. Harley concerning Jake's job they did?
Wonderful job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, now we are, we are going into executive session. The discussion is, discussion negotiation of an incident to propose contractual agreements and of the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to pending and threatening potential claim of other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims of the position of the public agency in other adversary situation involving assertion against the agency of claim. South Carolina Code, Section 30-4-70A2, fire contract, vape shops, discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, release of employees, students of a person related by public body, of the appointment of a person to public body, South Carolina Code, Section 30-4-70-A. And we will be returning to open session, and then you, you're welcome to wait with us. If not, we're gonna say good night to you and be safe, and we would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second.
Motion is made, motion of the second by Councilman Greaves. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes said, motion is carried. Good night, thank you for coming. I said most of care. Good night, and thank you for coming.
Good afternoon again. We would like to entertain the motion and go back into open session.
Some more.
It's probably moved by Dr. Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. All in favor?
Aye.
As having the motion is carried. We're going to hear from our city administrator, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Item number 10 for you all's consideration is third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fire service agreement and contract to purchase real and personal property with Orangeburg County authorizing the termination of individual fire contracts. There have been no substantive changes since our, since you all last met, but just by way to highlight what this agreement would entail, first and foremost, it would eliminate fire contracts in the fire service district known as the donut. Instead, the county would levy 19 mills in that area, which will, they would then pay 1.25 million initially to the city to provide fire services and fire protection in that area. There would be a 2% annual escalator, if you will, that will continue for the life of the agreement. The first term of the agreement is five years with an automatic, two automatic five-year renewals. If, for whatever reason, either the city or the county decide not to do the renewal, there's a buyout provision in the agreement that the city can exercise that would require the county to purchase equipment that the city has used to service the district. For the most part, the vast majority of citizens in the district will see a decrease in the cost of fire protection. Currently, the majority will pay higher, currently they pay higher for fire contracts than they will as a result of the tax levy. The ISO ratings will likely improve as well, which will, of course, lead to cheaper insurance. So we think this is a good, a good agreement between the city and county. I know it's taken some time, but for the benefit of all the citizens in that area, we think they'll receive service for less, actually, and happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Just to clarify, so citizens might see an increase in their tax bill if they were, are currently in an area where they have the option to purchase a fire contract, but in the end, overall, because we're eliminating the fire contracts, they will actually be paying less?
That is correct. The vast majority will be paying considerably less.
Are there any more questions or concerns before I read the ordinance? If not, an ordinance authorizing the execution of and delivery of a fire service agreement and a contract to purchase real and personal property with Orangeburg County authorizing the termination of individual fire contracts and other matters relating there, too.
We'd like to entertain the motion, please.
Y'all asleep or y'all could hear me?
Yeah, Mayor and Council.
I forgot that was said.
I move that we adopt the ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fire service agreement and a contract to purchase real and personal property with Orangeburg County authorizing the termination of individual fire contracts and other matters relating there, too.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit.
Move for passage.
Motion has been seconded by Councilman Knox. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As having the motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you for being with us tonight, and thank you for sitting with us. We would like to entertain the motion to adjourn. Like to entertain the motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second motion has been made by Councilman Grievous, second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As having the motion is carried. Everybody stand still, please, because we need to sign this agreement.